And welcome back to another episode of Hawk Talk. I am sitting here today with Principal Darren Siemens, Principal Dave Erickson, and also Mr. Yonner here from the school board. And Rich, I want to thank you very much for coming in and talking with us today about what happened at last week's school board meeting. It's kind of nice to get some fresh faces in here, some fresh voices in here. So we're going to really quick go over what was the March 13th school board meeting. We have the regular calling to mean the meeting to order, the confirmation of agenda, the approval of minutes, as well as the consideration of bills, which is just covering a few bills here and there and some financial reports. Let's start with a few things from Mr. Principal Siemens. Anything to note from that beginning of that meeting?
So I kind of get to be like a broken record this time when we go over this stuff because it's so habit or so we're so used to talking about financials. So there's nothing that glared out of me, but I would be curious with with a board member Yonner here today. Is there anything that you feel as a board member you'd like to share with the community that popped up in financials that maybe wasn't the norm? You know, we've like we've talked before in the past, we're looking at our monthly bills. We're comparing the budget to where we're at. You know, and again, it is it is this time of the year where three rough well, we're three quarters of the year through the academic year. Is there anything from your side, Rich, that that you want to share?
So one thing I guess I've been watching closely with the finances, we got the new boiler system this year. Really no metrics to see where that's going to be and what it's actually going to cost us. Now, we were fortunate this year. Really had a nice winter. We only had a couple of weeks where it got really cold out. But all in all, really pleased with the boilers, how they're doing, how they're performing. It will be interesting if we get our typical North Dakota winner that we can get here just to see how they do perform and how they hold up. But that's one of the big metrics that I've been really watching this year myself personally.
Yeah, you know, that's kind of something to note. I'm glad I'm glad he brought that up. So like last year even, we we had our budgeted amount. I don't remember what it was, but but we did not use it all. And it actually allowed us to have some reserves to put some money towards the playground, to put money towards some things that we otherwise wouldn't have had an opportunity to do. So it's nice when you have a winner like this because we can start to say we can project, we're going to have some some reserve money that will allow us to do some of that deferred maintenance stuff in the building that's been probably deferred for the last three decades. So so it's nice to see these things running that way. So one of the other things that I that I did talk about with financials last night that is really kind of jumping out. Areas where we budget online learning, we do that in the elementary, we do it in the junior high, we do it in the high school. And I'll be honest, that that budget has been blown apart this year because there's a lot, there's a larger presence than in any year prior of online learning. So it's one of those things going in, you never know for sure how many kids are going to sign up for a distance education course and that kind of stuff, especially this year, considering some of the changes they made at the legislative level. So we'll have to accommodate for that next year going into where those those budgets will be will be a little bit larger than what they were this year. So.
Absolutely. And that's one of the things that we've been seeing lately with things like such as a Mira has been like, you know, a new a new push and then, you know, with 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 some of the things that are happening with strategic planning and a few other items. That's it's just it's growing. It's just growing.
Yep. Can I jump in here real quick since you brought up a Mira?
Yeah, you bet.
We are in the process. Last year, Mr. Siemens reached out and he got a grant through an Esser Fund. A Mira is basically an AI reading program that we're using as a supplementation. And we're going to start it in K through six. Right now, we're Mr. Jay is nicely helping us. The biggest thing, guys, is logins and passwords. As a teacher, I've got a book. If I ever lost the book, just throw me out the door. But anyway, so what Mr. Janikowski is doing is we're trying to work power school in with the passwords and the login so that the kid when he's in kindergarten, his same password will carry him till he's a senior. And we're going to find that that's going to be one of those things. So when you hear a Mira, it's an AI reading app. You read to the computer. It gives you instantaneous feedback. And the cool thing then is is it also can record. So one of the best ways that I've learned with some of our students is hearing themselves read and hearing it back. And we're looking at about 20 minutes per week as a real vanilla, real easy start. And that's where we're at. So in the next couple of weeks, we will get that going more than we have. So I want to give Mr. Jay and Mrs. Henderson a kudos for that because it's been a lot of work and I want to thank you for help setting that up. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely. And the exciting thing about the A Mira too is, you know, you think like, well, why are my kids, you know, reading to an AI or whatever? Well, the big deal is now it becomes individualized, an individualized, I guess, semi para in a sense where you get immediate feedback on the effort that you put in with your reading, you know, and so instead of having 20 20 teachers that we have to, you know, manage all of that, it's it's a lot easier to do that one simple task and to get that information.
And it also goes levels. So the higher the level the student, and then it also gives you 10 different types of books at the level you're at, and then you go down to the library and pick them out. On the other end, if you're at a little bit lower level, it will also get you those levels of books you should be reading. So I'm glad you brought that up.
Yep, absolutely.
I mean, ultimately, AI, it's it's not going to go away. We're just at the tip of the iceberg on this thing. And I like how Mr. Erickson has rolled this out on the elementary side instead of just a wham, I mean, rush, rush, and everyone's got to do it. Because because it's you got to get the buy-in and it's it's a difficult thing with technology, passwords, all that. But I appreciate appreciate the way he's rolled it out with his staff to try to, you know, take on the struggles as easily as you can. So and ultimately, how long it's going to be funded by grants and stuff, we really don't know that right now. And and of course, moving forward, if that funding changes, you know, then at that point, it might be a decision the district will have to make to see, do we invest in this or not? Have we seen the rewards that we thought we were going to get?
Gotcha. Okay, so that kind of rounds out our consideration of bills and our financial report as well.
Yep.
So moving forward, we have the superintendent secondary principal report. Why don't we start with that, Darren?
You bet. Just a couple of quick things to touch base on. I want to, we had our the banquet, the chamber banquet took place last Saturday. Mr. Erickson and myself were down there handing out some awards that that we had for for staff and teachers. Had a good turnout from our teachers. You know, typically the weekends is a lot of things going on, but I think we had, we had probably 20 to 25 representation of school down there. So this year, the we had quite a few finalists in these areas, but but ultimately the winners, our coach and advisor award for for this year was actually a split, a tie, Miss Block for for Science Owen Owls, and then Mr. Buckmire for FFA. Our ancillary staff member of the year was was Kira Henderson. Our para educator of the year was Kelly Zimmerman. And then our teacher of the year was Miss Block. So it was it was a fun evening. Ultimately, we found ourselves stepping up and kind of helping, or not kind of helping, I mean, help serve the meal, helped helped pass time out because they were short on some staff. And I want to give kudos to the kids that went down. Mr. Tim took his auto class down Friday morning, moved 100 and what was it? 150 chairs, Dave? 150 chairs down there. And no complaining, no whining, no nothing. They were there. They were working hard, rocking and rolling. They actually went back on Monday, picked them up, brought them back to the school. And then throughout the rest of the day, we had Mr. Burke took his weight lifting class down. They moved chairs around on or tables and stuff around on Friday. And then Mrs. Erickson took some classes down too that helped with the fine decorations. So Henninger Public School had a huge role in getting that thing going. So I just want to thank everybody for doing that.
It's amazing what Donuts and Mountain Dew will do for some auto boys that early in the morning. I don't know if that gets on our wellness committee or not, but yeah.
Yeah. So we had that going on?
No, I was just going to jump in real quick and say too, with what Mr. Siemens said, it really shows what our school, the students, the staff, everybody, they're all great. They they are not afraid to jump in when asked to do a little bit extra. They will give it their all and just do whatever they can to make things flow and make it easier.
You bet. You know, one of the other big things I wanted to just let that parents know, we are in the process of our pre-registration. Mrs. Olsen's already got the first round of pre-registration done with next year's 2425's high school class. This is the time of the year we'll be doing it. Last year, I know it was late because of negotiations with the teachers. It was it's hard to register when you don't necessarily know who's coming back and who's who and so on and so forth. I'm looking for probably two more rounds before final registration. So we want that to be all wrapped up by the middle of April. So everybody knows what classes they're taking come come fall of 2425 academic year. And then there's, you know, we're the usual testing this time of the year, NDSA testing and things of that nature. So those are really kind of the highlights of of my report.
Okay, so that moves us on to the elementary principal report. Dave, why don't you take it away?
I'm going to kind of go off what Mr. Siemens said with with scheduling and and all the different things. There's a couple of big things in my area that are going to take place. And one of them is next Wednesday, we have kindergarten registration that will be at 5:30 in the cafeteria. One of the things that happens here, we have a good number because our preschool is currently in our school. But then we kind of do a survey, we kind of get together and say, okay, well, what about this family, this family? Because some go to daycare, some don't go to daycare, some come to preschool. So we're going to have a better number after next Wednesday on the number of kindergarten classes we will have. And then after that, we will make some other decisions in some of the areas. You know, some people have asked, are you going to split this grade, whatever? As soon as we get that kindergarten registration done, we can then start to give a little bit more concrete idea of what our next year's school looks like. I like to have that done before school's out. In the past, it's been kind of frustrating. A teacher shows up for in-service. Well, how many kids do I got? What? What are we doing? I like to have it all done before we're done in May. So the teachers then can plan over the summer, do any kind of classes or professional development that they need. Also, then we have our preschool registration that will take place Friday, April 12th at 8 o'clock, and that'll be at the Henninger Lutheran Church. So again, anybody out there that has preschoolers, you can reach Sarah Skogan at the school or Mrs. Henderson, if you have any questions on that. But again, Friday, April 12th, we'll have that on the usual social medias, Facebook, school, website, and and everywhere else. We did have Tara Bieber and the Lions Club came down last week and did 154 vision screenings. I love this because now we have a local Lions Club. We had 24 referrals out of those 154. What that means then is they find out that hey, maybe go get a little bit more of a screening or a checkup. And we want to thank Dr. Clute as well. He's always very good about, I don't think even charges on some of those, or he gets a cut rate. So I want to thank him for that as well. We also then are going to put in our changing program that Tara also does with our fifth and sixth, and that'll be on Monday, April 8th. There will be information coming home to parents. They're going to talk about body awareness, the good old puberty, cyber bullying, and different things that go through with that. So there will be information coming home to parents with that as well. Paisley Stolssis was our winner of our Adams County Sheriff Patch Contest. She's a fourth grader, and I want to thank Sheriff Fisher and the Adams County deputies and the Sheriff's Department for putting that on. We had quite a bit of money that was put put towards it. What's the word I'm looking for there, Mr. Siemens?
Pledged.
Pledged, thank you. There was pledged, so that money is not in in pocket yet, but we had a lot of money that was pledged, and I want to thank all the businesses and Sheriff Fisher, who's always been very helpful with any problems that we have up here. Math meet took place actually yesterday in Bowman. We had the largest contingency of kids. We had a big bus. There were little 14 passenger buses behind me. I was leading the way to the school. But when we got there, I think there was about 365 kids there between 15 schools. Jake Kessel was a was a first first place winner in the fifth grade division. Pretty excited. We put that on the announcements today and everybody was cheering and yelling for him. So congratulations to Jake. I want to thank Mrs. Fordall, Ms. Burkalter, and Mrs. Schneider. A lot of people don't realize that three days a week, they in the morning, right at breakfast time, which is about 7:40, they are practicing. They do one grade on Tuesday, one grade on Wednesday, one grade on Thursday. So when we talk about math coaches, they go above and beyond, and I want to thank them for that. Other than that, I guess that was that was pretty much it. We talked about, I did talk to Mr. Yonner about the wellness committee, and I'm going to talk to him about that. And I also talked to a board member, Allison Clausen, and and one of the things with our wellness committee is we're constantly looking at our concession, we're looking at our vending machines, and then also I want to give a shout out to the great job that our ladies are doing in the lunchroom. We kind of just get together, no critique, no, no complaining, just some suggestions. And we also have some people on from the kitchen staff that are on that wellness committee as well. And, you know, some of the kids have brought up, what about a junior high snack? Well, that's something that we would bring to the wellness committee. We would talk about, and I like the idea of having two board members on there and and getting their input, and then they can bring that back to the board as well to say, well, there's just not, it's not just something that Erickson likes. That's not why we have crab in the salad, you know, in the salad division there in the in the lunchroom.
Imitation though. Not real crap.
Baby steps. Yeah, yeah. Let me clarify that. Mine might be real, but baby steps. But you know, the the salad bar and different things like that. But I'm glad Rich and Allison both agreed to be on the wellness committee. So thank you for that, Rich. Yeah, so all I got, Mr. Jay.
So with Mr. Erickson's report there, the math meet, that's that's awesome. You know, a lot of the time, the academic side, we kind of overlook sports kind of overshadow everything. So to hear when we have these meetings, whether it's elementary or high school, just the representation number of one is phenomenal. But then we hear somebody like Jake goes and wins it for the fifth grade. That's that's awesome. And those those are things we should be celebrating just as much as the sports when they do it. And then on side note too, with the cafeteria, it's always interesting to hear the report with those gals up there because it seems like when things slow down come summertime, they're going somewhere for training, or they're learning something, or they're getting grants, or they're they're doing something. Those ladies up there, they they definitely don't get what they should deserve to get up there. They don't get recognized near enough. So great job with the elementary there. Again, just can't speak volumes about those guys.
Fantastic. All right. So moving on next to our athletic director report and committee reports.
Yeah, so I'll touch on a little bit. Mr. Kohler, we're sharing numbers from the winter sports. A date to keep in mind, April 14th at 5:30 PM, there's the winter sports banquet, and that's that's going to be here at the school up in the Robert's Drink Auditorium. So we'll be celebrating our winter sports. The numbers are looking, we're looking good for winter. We're anticipating some good numbers out for track in the co-op coming up here. I believe he was throwing around probably the 35 to 40 number on that. He was projecting anywhere from like 19 to 20 out for baseball, elementary volleyball. Correct me if did he say 50?
50 plus.
Wow. 50 plus kids. I mean, holy moly. That's a lot of kids. So so Mr. Resner, Coach Resner and her staff are going to be busy with elementary volleyball. So we talked about that. We we had band went to Dickinson on what today's Thursday, Tuesday. I believe it was for Tuesday. So we had 10 qualifiers for state, which will be later on in in April, I believe. So 10 qualifiers. So they starred in their performances, whether it was individual or group. So that's awesome. And then actually, we had Ella Freeball, who came back from from that competition, one of four of the 140 some kids that were up there, where she was distinguished as an outstanding performer. So that's 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 awesome. I mean, that's like being on all region, you know, that's all region for for band, which is which is pretty awesome there. So we had, we had band going up and doing that. We had the math meet. And then, of course, today, as we speak, Miss Block has got Science O up in Dickinson. So we'll be looking forward to hear back on how those kids did today. Very excited. There was 35 kids jamming into the bus this morning with their projects and different things. So they are, they are doing everything from paper tests on science type things to bridges they've built, and they'll be testing those and different different obstacle course cars and and all kinds of stuff. So that'll be awesome to hear there. Anything else that you guys can think of that Mr. Kohler talked about? I think that was kind of it.
So that was kind of his report there. Gentlemen, I don't know. Do you guys, does anyone want to take one of those negotiation ones? So I'm not talking the whole time or any of the committee reports that you feel comfortable with?
Yeah, I can. I'll touch on negotiations quick since that's the first one. Not really a whole lot to report there. It's just just kind of getting started. It's just the appendix B stuff that we're going over this year. But one really nice thing is I feel the board kind of bowed down. I'm going to call them the subject matter experts on this. It's our staff members that are heading up the FFA, FBLA, that type of stuff. We needed a job description, really. So number one, we knew what what it consists of, but also so if Mr. Siemens, you know, somebody leaves, we get somebody new, whatever it is, he can hand them something and they kind of have something to base it off of. So the staff has gone above and beyond. If we haven't got them all back, we are very close to having them all back. And I'll just say for myself, reading through them, it's kind of surprising on a busy year when you have a lot of kids going out for stuff. Those staff members are busy. Kids are busy. They're they're running around a lot. So a lot to take into consideration there. Again, we're just getting started. We have another meeting with the teacher's side on March 18th. They're just presenting. So nothing too exciting just yet on that one.
Also too, so other committee reports underneath negotiations?
You bet. So we had transportation committee met yesterday before the meeting, and they were looking at some bus routes. So we had to change some routes at the beginning of the year because of different factors that we've talked about in the past. So I'm not, I won't necessarily bring those up. But we were in a position to where we have a bus running the reader route. And it's a 14 passenger. So you're limited on how many you can get on there. And you find yourself running those a lot because CDLs are very hard to get anymore, right? You go above 14, you got to have a CDL. We had that bus that was going to Reader that we contract with Henry Miller, and there's some room on that bus. So we we approached Henry, the transportation committee approached Henry, and they see if he thought it would be feasible to drop south on that Reader route and grab a family that's been driving to school all year. And he agreed that that he thought he'd have room on the bus, and it wouldn't be a big problem to run down there. So we're going to start running that. And actually, I just talked to Henry this morning. That's not going to start until the 25th, as he worked out a plan with the family. So we we changed the reader route a little bit. And and so that's nice to do there anytime we can accommodate and try to try to make it easier on families that get kids to town. The building committee, we're looking at changing the front doors. We've had issues with the Dorsey.
Yep.
You know, kind of all year, a little bit of last year. I would imagine that the frames of those are the original from 1967 or 68, whenever that was built. I know the glass has been replaced and there's been some hardware things, but for for security reasons, I mean, we just, we need to, we need to work on some of that. So we're going to throw out a bid or look for some bids on changing our our entryway a little bit. Nothing dramatic, just moving some locations of those doors, updating the doors, making it so our handicapped accessible buttons actually work. So we're going to, we're going to be drawing up that and putting that on out on bids. And then you can either bid that by itself or the other project we want to bid on is maybe changing is changing that that library office area and maybe changing that makeup a little bit to where we can, we can hopefully get all the administration kind of down in the same area of the building. You know, Mr. Erickson's been on an island up there by himself. He doesn't have a secretary, you know, so so there he's running back and forth between between the district office down here now, which at times maybe is nice to be up there by yourself. But but it's also, he's active. He's an active guy. So I mean, he's out in the classrooms, he's all that. So when something happens, the first place we look is his office. Well, nine times out of 10, he's not there because he's in the classroom or he's helping out somewhere. So at least if his office is down here and it's emergency, we can quick know, okay, he's, you know, he, Mr. Erickson ran the second grade, or he's up in the fifth grade STEM room. And then it'll just help give support for him and and all that a little bit easier than than what he has right now. Ultimately, it all depends on the bid. So we'll we'll get that out so area of contractors and stuff can start to bid those projects.
Okay, awesome. Then underneath that, it has a co-op and cross country?
Just real quick, one more thing, Joel, on the building.
Oh, you bet.
Yeah, we we don't want to forget about the pool yet. I know there's people questioning, yet, you know, when's concrete gun going to get done on the outside? So we did briefly discuss about that. I know we've been in contact with the contractor. It will be this spring. Right now, it's, we're just kind of letting mother nature play your cards. We don't want to start too early and then have issues and then potentially have to rip it up. And I can't put a timeframe on it, but I would assume by this summer sometime, you know, we can take advantage of that deck and enjoy the sun out there. And parents, kids, whatever, when we have a party, you know, they can just have fun out there and sit and enjoy it. So that should be done this year.
Yep. Awesome. Awesome. Okay, so then next thing underneath building is co-op and cross country.
Anyone? You want me to take it?
Anybody?
Nobody? Okay. So co-op committee met. So co-op committee met on Monday, talked about different things. Ultimately, the thing that came before the board last night was the the question of cross cross country. And unfortunately, we're in one of those situations to where, you know, financially, you have financial questions with what we're spending on coaching contracts versus how many kids is it impacting in a positive way, right? And with these things, it kind of comes down to numbers, right? So we're projecting next year that there's going to be one student who chooses cross country to be their primary sport. So at that point, you, the district and the co-op has to decide, what do we, what do we put into this, right? Are we are we paying for a full-time coach? Are we paying for two full-time coaches? This last year, we had two full-time coaches. Ultimately, the decision was made last night that if if these numbers continue to project that way, that we'll be looking for volunteer coaches, not paid, because the projections are the numbers are going to be one again, albeit there may be some kids that choose it as a secondary sport. And and I don't know if we want to get into explaining that right now or not. What are your thoughts? So so you have, you can do both sports, right? I mean, if you're a female, you can be in volleyball, you can be in cross country. If you're a male, you can be in football, you can be in cross country. What the co-op did, and it was a great idea, having been a coach myself in the past when similar situations here, the kids have to choose their primary sport. That way, that coach, that team can know what to expect as far as is this kid going to be here?
Every single.
Available. Exactly. How can we use them, right? And it makes the team better. That ultimately means though, is that is that if you're a secondary athlete, you're not going to be involved in that sport as much as as a primary. So, you know, are you even going to make it to practice? How many of the events are you going to get to? So again, that's that's kind of that primary secondary thing. We're moving forward, voluntary coaching, the school will continue to supply uniforms, the school will continue to pay any state and regional fees we need to for admittance and acceptance at the NDHS AA level and in and into the each each meet. And then that's kind of where we're at right now. And and travel would be up to up to the volunteer coach and the athlete. So that that's where we're at.
Okay.
Yeah. So with that, when this got brought up last night, there was a lot of discussion about it. I don't think it was a decision that anybody really looked forward to making. But it was something that just kind of, it had to happen. Like I said, we discussed, I bet you we had 10, 15 minutes where we discussed, there was different questions, different, you know, we were looking different avenues of a way that we're, we could potentially keep it and as a paid position. And like Mr. Siemens said, with with the numbers currently, we can revisit it in the future if we need to. But right now, that for the school, that's just the best decision we had to come up with. So unfortunately, that's sometimes what happens.
Yep, absolutely. So basically, just decisions being made based off of numbers, you know, what what's what's happening.
Yep, numbers and the financial implication it has.
Of course, of course. So that kind of wraps up miscellaneous business. It doesn't look like we have any unfinished business that was talked about at our meeting yesterday. Aside of that, we have new business superintendent evaluation.
I'll let you, maybe you touch on that, huh, board member?
So I know this is Mr. Siemens's favorite topic, but I believe after this one, now we've got a year, if I remember correctly, right?
Well, so and I got to double check that. My impression is so I I go, I have two of these a year, and it's great fun. I love, I love evaluations. We, Mr. Erickson and I do them for the staff. I mean, it's an opportunity to get some constructive criticism. Problem is, is this is a one, two, three, four thing, and very rarely is there any comments that gives me feedback on, hey, what do you like that we're doing? What do you like that I'm doing? What don't you like that I'm doing? And and last night, I had a little bit of feedback and I I appreciate that because it gives us a talking point, right? Now I know it clears up the mud. But typically, there's never been that. So you get these numbers and it's like, I don't even know who to talk to to ask for clarification. What are they even talking about? But hopefully now it's, I believe if the board chooses, it can be one time a year. But anyway.
So yeah, it's it's anonymous on our side. Like he said, he doesn't know on his scoring who to talk to. I will say one thing that I said, and we're here doing it today. I like when we do the streams and the talks and stuff like that. There's a generation that loves that stuff. And that was another talking point we can touch on later. But as far as the evaluation goes, just to give people, it's pretty broad. The questions that we get asked, it's it's some of them are just really hard to answer because there's a lot more to than just what the question is asking you to. I feel like we should dig into some of those questions a little bit deeper. And and there's just nothing there. So you you give an answer based on what you have in front of you. And Mr. Siemens does do a very good job. But like I said, I did, I'll step up and I dinged him on on this one, where it seems like in the past, we did have more of that stuff. And he did bring up a great argument. You know, sometimes it's, are we beating a dead horse by just, you know, repeatedly doing this? Should we be doing more over here or more over there? So again, that brought up great talking points. But overall, he did have a satisfactory scores above satisfactory. No issues. So yeah. No issues. So yeah.
Okay. Awesome. So after that, after the superintendent evaluation, that pretty much rounds out the rest of our, our Hawk Talk today. Did anybody have any other closing thoughts or any kind of things to mention before we wrap this up?
I just want to say thank you for allowing me to come on.
Yeah, thank you for coming in. And actually, it's nice to have some board members in here because usually it's Darren, Darren and me, or, or Dave will come in. And it's just nice to have some fresh voices, some fresh faces in here and.
Every now and again, we're lucky enough to get Mr. Dix up from the radio station, but.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
So next time though, let's not announce who it is first. Let's see if people can guess based upon the voice. Instead of masked singer, it'll be, we'll have to come up with something.
A masked board member.
Yeah, masked board.
Awesome, awesome. All right. Well, gentlemen, thank you very much for coming in and doing this Hawk Talk again today. And also to listeners, thanks for tuning in and listening to this episode. And remember you can listen to Hawk Talk wherever you listen to your podcasts, whether that be Apple Podcasts, Spotify Podcasts, or of course, our YouTube channel, which is the HPS Stream Team. And have a great.